Called order of the main chance regular meeting of the Monty School Board. Good evening and welcome. We've decided 1.2 adoption of the agenda entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say five by a second. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move to item 2.2 announcements and I'll ask Shawna to acknowledge the gifts.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. There were three gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $4,412.7. And there were 19 gifts received for the Ralph Reader food shelf for this period for a total of $55,977.22. It's recommended that the board accept the gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great, thank you. Additional announcements upcoming meeting dates June 7th. Regular meeting of the board at 7:00 PM and June 25th, a regular meeting of the board also at 7:00 PM, both here at the district center. Move to item 2.3 superintendent's report.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jonathan. Tonight I want to continue sharing some more student recognition news and this is truly hot off the press, so you're getting it first. As we come to the end of the school year, we're excited to announce that 21 of our students have earned their Associate of Arts.
Wow.
Wow.
It is. Absolutely outstanding. Yep. 20 of the students are current seniors, so they'll graduate with both their high school diploma as well as the AA degree. And the 21st student is actually a junior who has accomplished this and earned an AA degree. Incredible. Yeah, 21 degrees, we believe is the highest number we've ever, we've ever had. Quite impressive. And again, this is just one of the quality educational pathways available to, to our students. So we want to extend our sincere congratulations to each and every one of them for their accomplishment. And we're looking forward to celebrating with them and their families at the upcoming graduation ceremonies where they'll be recognized at the ceremonies on stage. So congratulations to all of those students. That will end my report.
Thank you. That is awesome.
It is awesome.
Awesome. We'll move to item 3.0. Hard to beat that, but let's go to approval of the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, take us item 4.1, Dopco will update instructional technology. We'll welcome up like a whole team. All right. Nothing better to do on an A degree, like first summer night. So welcome, we're glad to have you here.
No place we'd rather be. Thanks for the opportunity. So Angie Peschel, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction. And tonight I have with me Penny Pease, who's the Director of Technology, and Susan Herter, who her title this week is Instructional Technology Coordinator. Yeah, Susan wore her many hat. So, and then I also wanted to mention Heidi Sari is part of this team as well, who's worked on this goal. She is a curriculum coordinator as well. So here tonight to share with you our progress on the district operating goal around high quality instruction and the technology plan integrating technology for our learners. So just start with the rationale for why we chose this as one of our goals and the rationale for this work. So educational opportunities can be realized by integrating technology into instruction at all educational levels. And that increasing integration enhances our ability to do three things, many things, but these three things that we're highlighting here tonight. So address equity and student access to technology, provide student access to digital content outside of the school day as needed, and then personalize, it really helps to personalize the learning experience. We believe that a strong pedagogy and the ability to provide opportunities to access technology will increase both student engagement and also then achievement for students. So here is the district operating plan goal for this year. Our goal was to design and implement a technology plan that integrates technology for learners at all educational levels, and this goal has been met. So we're here tonight to share with you some of the evidence to prove that. Now, this is one of the priority goals for, for our district operating plan. So in June you'll get a packet with many more details. Tonight we're just highlighting some of the key components of that. So technology must be used to enhance learning, not as a substitute for learning, right? That's what is something that we believe in. It's been the core of our belief ever since 2012, 2013, is when the board first committed to providing access to devices to students throughout their school day. The pandemic has allowed us to broaden our understanding of how, when, and where this learning can take place. We thought it was a good opportunity to revisit that plan that we had put in place in 2012, 2013. So back in 2012, 13, we collaborated with teacher leaders to create this framework around high quality instruction. We believe then and still believe today that a device alone will not increase student achievement. And as part of our work for this goal this year, we updated this framework that was put together with some teacher leaders across the system. We identified high quality instructional practices. We connected them to some technology standards that supported that work. And then in June, when you get, review the entire district operating plan packet, you'll see this document in its entirety. This is just one small component of it and the framework. And in that framework, you'll also see four components that we use to, or four practices that we use to leverage technology within our system for our students. So it's with assessment. So technology allows us to be able to provide practice for students or formative assessments and summative assessments and vary and give immediate feedback on that. Technology allows for that. Instead of teachers having to take work home and then grade it and then bring it back to the next day, they can do that in real time. Technology can be leveraged to enhance engagement through active participation in learning, collaboration, both the peer-to-peer collaboration as well as the collaboration along with the teacher. And then technology also can provide meaningful feedback that is frequent, specific, and timely through the, through the technology that's provided. So next one, move to some more of the technical components of the topical.
Yeah, so we have been using devices in classrooms for many years now, since 2012, 13. Then the pandemic hit. We put devices in every kid's hands and sent them home. And as the pandemic was, for school purposes, sort of winding down, getting us back a little bit more tomorrow, really our question was, what's the right approach to this? We realize that there are huge advantages for our students to have devices, but what's the best model for our district, for our students to enhance their learning experience? So we ended up with, for the elementary students, a cart-based model. So devices for the most part stay at school, but they're assigned to each child. So they go in their classroom, they have a device that's theirs. They're the only ones that log into it. It's theirs throughout the day. They take it to specials and other things. If there is an instructional need for that student, for any student to take a device home, then we make that arrangements also so that they can do that. But as a, you know, sort of the overall practices, elementary's, devices stay at school. Last summer, we started talking with teachers of our youngest learners and kindergarten teachers on was the keyboard-based Chromebook really the right tool for those learners? The decision was that we would do a tablet, a touchscreen without keyboard. It's still a Chromebook, but that model for kindergarten. So that's fully been implemented this school year. During this school year, we had conversations with first grade on the same conversations. Is, is a keyboard-based tool the right tool for first grade learners? Or is a touchscreen, no keyboard, the right choice? The choice was, the decision was to go with tablets, so we'll be getting those to start in the fall of next year. And then next year we'll have additional conversations with second grade. Again, if what's the right tool? We don't know what the right tool is. Second grade teachers are the best ones to help us determine that. Also at the real young grades, we use a tool called Clever, which allows students to access devices with a QR code versus having to actually type in their username and password. It's hard enough for adults to remember all of that, so this makes it a lot easier for our youngest learners to do that. It also then lands them on a dashboard where they have access to various tools that they might use throughout the day and does a single sign-on pass-through for them. So they're not having to log into this tool and log into that tool throughout the day. Just logs them in once with their QR badge and away they go. At the secondary level, we decided grades six through 12, every student would have their own device, but we would check it out to them. They would keep it through the, throughout their whole year. They take it home, bring it back, day in and day out. We provided a protective sleeve for them so that they could, you know, keep the device safe. And we'll be collecting devices this summer. Ultimately, the goal is to, when we hand the student a device or check it out to them and, and at the beginning of the year that they can keep it until they leave us at the end of 12th grade. We're not quite there in our processes yet, but that's our long-term goal. In addition to that, we have hotspots that we can provide through our deans at all of our middle and high schools and, and other sites that have secondary students. They just need to ask for one and, and one is provided to them. We don't have any other stipulations on who can have them and who can't have them, just that they work with their dean to make arrangements to have them.
And I think something to highlight here also just, the teachers are the best people to decide which devices they want to be using, right? So high quality instruction is always the, the purpose. And so giving teachers that flexibility, what's the best device and, and for what purpose might you want to use that? And so that's been, I mean, focused for that work as well.
And a lot of times there may be an activity that in this unit, we're using a device to do it, and in this new unit, we're actually going to use paper and pencil, even though it's a similar activity. The teachers are the one that made those choices based on all kinds of things, the students in their classroom, the unit that could study, experience that they're having. All right, so last fall, we sent a survey to all of our secondary students, six through 12, on access to a device and access to internet. So that we could get a, have a really good foundation of knowing how many students were going to need devices so we could have enough hotspots to meet the need. That was the primary goal of this. This year, we, for ease of making it happen, we sent the survey to students with their student account. Next year, this survey will be part of ParentView. So this information will come directly from parents rather than students. And you'll see in some of the results, the students weren't really sure, like what kind of internet do I have at home? Well, I don't know. I just, it just works. You know, we had some mixed results and we think with parents will have.
You may have parents who have the same.
Yeah.
It just works.
Oh, magic. So, but this really gives us a lot of information about what sort of access students have, both to, to devices and to the internet. So these first two screens, the first one is about if the district did not provide you with a Chromebook, would you have access? And there's 72% or so say they do.
Did you, did you clarify that that's not a phone?
Yeah, well, that was one of our questions. One of the follow-up questions is, the first one was, if you did, if you have, if you didn't have this, did you have access? And then if you had access, did you have to share? And the third question is, if you did have access, what kind of device was it? So we asked if it was a tablet, a phone, a desktop, a laptop, or a Chromebook. So there, you know, sort of categories.
Right.
But absolutely, because a phone is, while it's access, it's, it's not the same.
Right.
For a 10th grader, you know, writing an essay.
Right. So we just had a few of them for you here in your packet that you'll get in June. You'll see the results of all of those questions.
Right, and in that packet is a breakdown by building, showing a percentage of the nu, the percentage of students that responded. We only had a total of about 50% students respond.
Great.
But it gives a really good picture of that. The second screen is about internet access. What's on your own page here? There we go. Did they have internet at home? Yes. And then you'll see on this one, this was a yes, no, and then an other, so they could type in and answer. So we have a lot of no, but, or sometimes but kind of responses there. The, for the most part, yes was the primary answer here, but they didn't know in what capacity. Was it broadband? Was it a hotspot? Was it something else? And that's the second image there in the bottom right. You can see that there are lots of different options there, including the hotspot that we provide.
And I don't know being 33%, that's crazy.
All right, so one of the other pieces of evidence to show that we've met this goal is a tool that we're just getting up to speed called Learn Platform. This is a tool that's going to allow us to vet applications that kids might and teachers will be using in their classroom and provide some information about that, both to the public and to, and internally with teachers. The process we had in place before was quite cumbersome and difficult to display to parents or to the community at large. So this tool is going to give us a lot of visibility on the different apps that are used and by building, et cetera. So we have, we can show a little demo of that.
You're getting the sneak peek of it because it's not quite ready for primetime yet. But this tool is through a company called Learn Platform. And, and one of the other pieces that I was concerned about as we went into the pandemic was a large focus on cybersecurity. As schools went virtual, there were more attacks. And one of the concerns that I've always had is around our students' data. That's, that's really important information. And so this will also help us with that piece. And we're going through training right now to become certified for data privacy and, and vetting apps. But this is our tool, Learn Platform. And what it can provide for us is basically a searchable list. You can search by site, you can search by whichever tool you're interested in. So if we wanted to, you can see all the different filters there. Again, we have to fill those out to, to make sure we're getting the information we want out there. And I think it's better than the spreadsheet we were using. I do want to point that out. But the nice thing is we can look at a tool like Seesaw, which is what we're using in pre-K through grade three for helping with communication and having student information there. And once Seesaw comes up, you get some additional information. And this information, this is our public website, so this would be the community-facing website. You get a short description of what Seesaw is, the links to the privacy policy and the terms of service and to the website. You can see that we've said it's approved with restrictions and that it's compliant with our data privacy policies. And the reason it's approved with restrictions is because we purchased it for pre-K through grade three and then also for special ed students for 12 to use. There's also a free version that has a different type of contract. So we have to be really aware of these tools that have both a paid version and a free version. As you scroll down, you can see on the right-hand side, there are some badges. You'll notice some of the logos from the different schools, so you can very quickly identify which schools are using it. And if you hover over them, the names do come up. And we can add resources for parents. This was something we always struggled with, was the parent who says, how do I get to my child's journal in Seesaw? Or how do I help my child log in if they're at home? And so we can provide links or other resources as well, so they can go directly to the help center and see, okay, so I need to get my child's clever badge and then I can go here and, and log in in that way. So it's, again, much nicer than a spreadsheet, I think, and very clear.
So this, so we won't have teachers choosing independently to use an app in a class that no one else is using? Or, or could they, but they just need to go through this approval process?
Correct. Right. Because it's possible that a teacher who's teaching a course that may be very unique to their building or to their grade level might need something that's a little bit different.
Yes.
Than other teachers would.
I know I've had a teacher use Seesaw at CHIP.
Yep.
And I just, it was our first experience to it.
Right.
And this platform will be accessible to all parents?
All parents.
Easily accessible, will it require like dual factor authentication of one sample and fingerprints?
Just for you.
A password that I can't remember, but I wrote on the fridge somewhere sometime?
No, we'll have it linked on the main website. We can, there's a couple of ways we can display it. We're trying to figure out the best way to do that, but this link is public. It's currently public. You can research it. Otherwise, we can embed it into the district website as well. But the other nice piece is as we're building out this library of resources, everybody's seeing the same information. Parents in the community see the same information that the teachers see that we're also looking at. So the consistency across the board is, is going to be, I think, so helpful. And I think too, for teachers who might be looking for a tool, they can now come here and say, oh, what is all, this might be the tool I could use.
Who's using what, what's working?
Right. And other teachers are using it, so maybe I should, I can reach out and find out what's happening in those classrooms.
How long would it take a teacher who kind of wants to do something unique? What's the approval process for that teacher to have that app approved? Approved?
So they submit into our ticketing, it's our help desk program. So they submit a ticket to that that describes how they're going to use it. It has a link to that. And then Heidi Sari, who's mentioned, curriculum coordinator, and I get together once a month to take a, to kind of do the, the deep dive into it.
Okay.
Is the material appropriate for that grade level? Is the content appropriate for the class? I'm looking at it from a privacy lens, and, and will it work on the Chromebooks as well? But also, who, who's owning that data? Is that our data? How much are we giving them? Are we comfortable with that or not? Is there advertising? You know, is there targeted advertising?
So clearly there needs to be some advanced planning on behalf of the teachers. It could take up to six weeks or more.
Yeah, yeah. It used to be pretty common that Angie and I would get emails from teachers that would say, I need to use this tomorrow.
Yeah.
And it's, it's very challenging because, you know, again, we're really concerned about if kids are creating accounts or if you're creating accounts for kids, what does that look like?
Right, sure.
Yep. But what a great resource. And I know you guys showed us in the work session too, that you can actually see the reasons why something was declining.
Yeah, so if you want to go Guardian.
So it's, it's a great resource for the community to be able to, to understand the reasons of the logic behind it. Cause I don't think everybody always understands.
Right. Correct. And that was one of the things as we were, as we're being onboarded into this product, one of the, our consultant said, oh, I was really happy to see you put denied products in there. And I said, well, we want to be transparent. We want people to know that we've actually looked at these items and this is why. And she said, a lot of districts don't do that. And I just think, why, why wouldn't you? You have this tool that can show you everything. So in this case, Go Guardian Teacher is a tool that can be used to see, there are some tools in it that can help with classroom processes, like distributing resources. These are things that we already have in place with Google Classroom and some other tools. One of the other pieces of it that teachers like is that you can see what's on a student's screen at any given time while they're in the class. And there's currently pending legislation that would basically restrict us from, from doing that. And I, for good reason, I think, you know, for the student's privacy. And so we can add in there exactly as, as Lando was saying, why we reviewed and why it was denied and provide that. And, and then if a teacher wants it, we, they're not going to submit it again. Now they know we've already reviewed it, so they can save themselves some time and effort in that as well. So we're hoping to, Heidi and I will be working to build this out over, for a full rollout this fall, hopefully in August. But it'll take some time for us to get the information together and to really go back and reevaluate, in some cases, some of these tools.
Right.
And we just have one last piece of evidence that we wanted to share with you to show that we have met this goal, and that is the remote learning classrooms at the secondary level. So we have meetings, we have rooms that are going to look something like this, it's a little fancier, but you know, not close to that, with a couple of screens. And these remote learning classrooms will offer opportunities for students to participate in their home building, but maybe from a teacher across, across the way or at another, another school setting. So a primary example of this would be for a math class. So we currently do have some middle school math students who go to the high school for some math courses, and we provide busing for that. And that is a great opportunity for them, but you can imagine with busing and getting to class on time and those pieces. So this will allow us to, students can remain in their home school, be there, have access to the teacher teaching the class. We'll have a parent in that classroom with those teachers, so they'll be supervised. The teacher who is on site with the, the class will be able to see and respond. We'll have microphones, we'll have monitors. So very excited about this. We are in process right now of, we have a meeting scheduled on Thursday with the secondary principals. They know it's coming and now, we keep saying it's coming and now we're like, what room are we putting this in? So, and then start talking about getting really creative and talking with some teachers about who might be interested in starting this with us for next year.
Yeah, so we've ordered all of the various component pieces. And then once we identify which rooms, then that'll give us a little bit additional information on what else we need to order to make it work in those rooms. But yeah, I think this will be a really nice setup and we'll open up lots of other classes.
And hopefully teachers list for more than one classroom. That's our.
So right now it'll be at the three middle schools and the two high schools or ELC?
ELC also, yes. Yep, as well. Yep, so all of our secondary buildings will have it and then we'll just start, we, we've built it and we will see if they will come. What they will do with these spaces, so.
So is it one classroom at each of those buildings?
That is correct, to start with.
I was just, what, thinking about 916 and, you know, some of our career and tech classes where we're busing kids over to the career and tech center. This might be something, you know, for those really popular classes, maybe it's something where instead of busing kids to the career and tech center, this might be something in the future that we could look into as partnership with 916 as well.
I think it allows us to think creatively and innovatively about where we're providing instruction for students. So I'm excited to get the ball rolling and see what we can do for next year. So absolutely.
Yeah, great.
All right, so that's what we had for you tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have just a couple of thoughts. Yeah, I, I'm not sure our technology folks have been in front of us in the last two years as a board. They've been behind the scenes doing the thing, so I want to make sure that we don't let you leave without a heartfelt thank you. We've talked a lot about the unsung heroes over the course of the pandemic. And the way you deployed technology was truly remarkable. Penny, I think you started on like a Tuesday. Penny, I think you started on like a Tuesday, Michelle, the school's down on a Wednesday.
Quite that close, but pretty close. But you know, thank you for that, but it does take a village.
Tremendous. And then I, I think back and you know, Sandra, I think you can remember, we spent so much time talking about technology in my early days on the board. And it was the, the first rollout of the Chromebooks. And we were really proud of how we did that. And you know, while other schools were putting an iPad in every hand of every student, just on spec, we were, we were asking the same questions that you're asking today. What's the right approach? What's the right tool? High quality, you know, instruction as a, as a priority. And then listening to our users, our teachers, our students, our parents. So I love this next phase of the work and that we're taking that exact same approach, you know, 10 years later to think about, how do we deploy this, not as the end all be all, but as a really important tool to help advance the work that our teachers and students and everybody does in the district? So thank you for that. A great report. And just a reminder, as we bring these DOP goals forward, we're going to come back in, you know, the coming months and you know, evaluate you and your team based on this. So a really outstanding update on, on how you've accomplished what you've done. So thank you for, for making time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move to item 5.1, resident parent survey results. We're going to welcome, I think we have promoted Mr. Peter Leatheran. He made himself the CEO, so congratulations. We're glad, we're glad to have you. Longtime partner with the district. As Mr. Leatherman gets his presentation prepared, it's not uncommon for the district to seek input in lots of different ways. We talk about this, you know, whether it's our liaison roles on PTAs, it's being out in the community generally, it's feedback that we receive. It's been, you know, in increasing volumes in recent months and years. But then also through, you know, you know, outgoing surveys to our resident communities. So what we have this evening is our most recent set of data, some benchmarking against previous years to give us a little bit of a, a report card as a district on how we're performing. And I know we'll have some questions along the way with regards to how we stack up compared to other districts across the state, because you and your team do a lot of this work all over the place. So welcome, we're glad you're here. And then before I, I let you go, I will tell you, you are like the last thing standing between us and 78 degrees. So no pressure on the presentation, but.
I thought you were going to say the wild game, so.
Well, I am the wild game.
Same difference. All right, everything's good here, let's go. No, all right. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening to go over the survey. Just to put up the methodology for everybody to, for those that saw it last week, here's a repressor. For those that missed the work session, we spoke with 400 randomly selected residents across the school district. That 400 sample is projectable to plus or minus 5% to 95 out of 100 cases. We then did a balloon sample of parents, so we had approximately, I believe, 24% of the 400 samples. So 96 were parents, called an additional 204 parents, put those together. So now we have, and we can look at a parent sample of 300. The 300 sample is projectable to plus or minus 5.8%. The calls were completed between March 28th and April 8th, so after your spring break. Average interview time was 14 minutes, non-response rate was 6%. And I thought I'd just roll through some demographics, just so you and the community can understand. It's a, it's a representative sample. We're looking at the demographics, we're looking at benchmarks historically with the district, but also looking at census updates. As the census slowly rolls out, the 2020 census slowly rolls out, we can look on those key factors of households with children, households with seniors, homeownership versus renters, those sorts of things. So cellphone-only households, almost a majority, 49%. 13% maintain the landline and 38% have both landline and cell phones. Continuing residential longevity in the district, 44% have been in the district for 10 years or less. 35% have been in the district for over 20 years. So the norm, the average resident has been here for about 14 years. 23% are millennials, 18 to 34-year-olds, while 35% are over the age of 55. Typical age comes in right at about 47 and a half years old. You're a very educated school district, always have been, flat majority indicating that they're college graduates, that being either four-year graduates or postgraduate, masters, doctor, whatever. 19% high school graduates or less, while 28% had some college experience. Now 15% are, have preschoolers or infants in the household. 24% have children in the Moundsview School District. 70% no children whatsoever. And that does not imply age, just the lack of presence of a child. So basically, when you think about the results and you look at the overall community, 3 in 10 of those folks are answering as parents, 7 in 10 are answering as non-parents in the overall sample. Continuing, 1 in 5 folks were renters. Median home value has gone up a bit, that's self-assessed, approaching $400,000, the typical. Whether that lines up with the county records is always tends to skew a little bit high as people self-evaluate. Ethnicity was asked of the parent, 73% indicated white, 14% African-American, 6% Asian Pacific Islander, 5% Hispanic Latino and 2% multiracial. The financially stressed versus financially comfortable, that's on the uptick now, again, over the past couple of months. As we've seen concerns about inflation, cost of groceries, cost of goods go up. So you're right in line with what we're seeing across the metro and across the state over the past six to eight weeks, with about 4 out of 10 being financially stressed, up about 10 points since 2021, even from January of 2021. And then finally, male, female evenly split. And then you can see the geographic area of the resident, 34% in Shoreview, 27% in New Brighton, 15% Moundsview, 11% Arden Hills, 6% North Oaks and 8% in the remaining communities in the district. So that's the methodology and demographics. I'll just say upfront, like I mentioned at the work session, when we look at this data, we're going to look historically and we're going to go back about a decade. And it's important to think about the 2022 results get a big old asterisk, because we've had the pandemic. And everything, you know, when we're all retired 15, 20 years from now, or tomorrow, that it's important to realize for people looking back at these results to understand the context, because surveys are snapshots in time. And this is a very strong snapshot in time, especially in comparison to what we've seen. What we've seen at a macro level across the metro and across the state is less enthusiasm on a lot of things, and especially about education. Folks haven't soured, they haven't gone unfavorable. What they've gone is from excellent to good. Agree, from strongly agree to agree, from an A to a B. They're not going only fair or poor, they're not going to a C, they're not disagreeing. They're just less enthusiastic. And you're going to be able to see now, after two years, and whether there's a straight line from 2019 when we did the survey to 2022, that's not fair to say. It probably jaged all over the place over the last three years. But what you've been able to do uniquely now, two years later into the pandemic, is at least maintain what you were before. You've become whole. On what it was, are we back to normal? No. But from public opinion, folks feel really good about where folks, what the district has done. So the first thought people think about when they think of the district, this is open-ended, they can tell us anything. Your folks have always gone all over the board. They don't concentrate on, you know, one category at 30, 40%. Quality education and good academics at 14%, good teachers, 12%. Then we have larger schools, then we have excellence, good year for sports obviously at 8%. Opportunities for all in broad curriculum at 6%. This kind of lines up then if we go to the next one. What folks are thinking about and what they like most has always been in this district centered about what's happening in the classroom academically. Now what leaves the list is the good teachers at 25%. But if we look at the quality education, the good academics, the high rankings and the excellent, it's actually 32%, collapsing those into actually what is happening in the classroom. That's what this district has always responded to. And so it's always been academics, it's always been the personnel side. And then the program curriculum, you have the opportunities for all the broad curriculum at 16%. This varies, some districts are very focused on curriculum. Some districts are very focused on, on staffing and teachers, some are very focused on academics. You've always had a very clear priority amongst all three on what folks value. So what they like most actually lines up very nicely with what they think about first, instead of it being a disconnect between what they like most and what they think about first. What's the most serious issue? Now, this one, we, we could tweak this from Thursday night when I was here and added the 2019 results in, just so you could see the shift in opinion, realizing you got a big old pandemic between 2019 and 2022. So where has there been statistically significant changes? On the, on the top two, and keep in mind, what we look for in this open-ended is if you have 20 to 25%, 1 in 4, 1 in 5 folks coalescing around one response, we consider that to be a pretty major concern at the outset. You don't have that. You have two issues that hit double digits, they have grown, one of them on the edge of statistically significance on large class sizes, moving from 10 to 16% and lack of funding from 10 to 14%. Everything else is in single digits and it's kind of shifted through the years, in, in the three years. Budget cuts remain the same, lack of discipline is up 2%. We're going to see a little more in-depth on parents' perception on student behavior. Increasing enrollment went down. Diversity issues, 3% increase, drugs and alcohol, down 6, high taxes, down 6. We've seen it, it's interesting now, we'll see how assessments bear out for the 2023 taxes that have come out, because overall, the concern on property taxes has gone down across the metro. Poor spending down 4, declining quality down 4. What is up is at the bottom, the unsure category. And we're going to see that in a lot of different areas, especially amongst non-parents. We've seen it over the course of the pandemic. When we ask for specifics, especially with non-parents, they have been distracted. Their focus has been elsewhere. I mean, we've had a pandemic, we've had social justice, we've had the 2020 election, we've had vaccines, we've had, I mean, inflation now, everything. And we've seen this disconnect amongst non-parents when we're talking about local levels of government. And so that unsure category moving from 11 to 18% is pretty consistent about 1 in 5 in the overall sample, that when we ask for specifics and they're almost all parent, or non-parents, saying they just don't have enough information to get specific at the outset.
And, and just to be clear, these were open-ended questions?
Correct.
Not multiple choice?
This is not multiple choice.
And you're seeing that level of apathy across districts and issues?
Yeah, yeah, especially, it, it ebbed, it, it was very high in 2020 and the first part of 2021. When things started, shall we say, settle and people started like re-engaging and thinking, okay, what's going on in my cities, in my school districts, everything? Parents lived and died, obviously, day by day. But over the past three to four months, we're seeing this disconnect again. As folks, we have the Ukraine war, we have inflation, we have all sorts of more issues that have come on board. That's distracting them, shall we say, from local government again. Right off the top, the quality of education. Going back over a decade now for comparison sake, and when I put up the, over time, hopefully the lime green is the 2022, the number to key in on. This time, 88% rate the quality of education favorably, 8% or 7% unfavorably and 6% are unsure. Now, most districts, it's between 80 and 90%. What differentiates districts is the excellent rating, the enthusiastic rating. First off, you're at 51%. That's in the top three over the last five years, okay? What's very unique is you actually maintained the 2019 rating. Districts, over the course of the pandemic, it's been pretty consistent, a 20 to 30% decrease in the excellent rating. The shift is that they don't go unfavorable, they just go to the soft favorable. They go from excellent to good. So districts on the west coast of Hennepin County, Edina, 20-point drop. Yzeta, 20-point drop in the excellent rating. That shift from excellent to good, okay? Your first district now that's maintained or are at where you were before the pandemic. Now, just with that caveat, I don't believe it's a straight line from 2019 to 2022. I think there were ebbs and flows. But whatever's been done, it's been made whole in the minds. Folks, in 2020, with, at, at the fall of 2020, everybody was concerned, whether you're going in-person, hybrid, distance, whatever it was. Once the kids started going back to school in 2021, we started to see this shift on the excellent rating. It became a macro issue concern on the quality of education and kids falling behind over the pandemic. So very strong endorsement of what's occurred over the course of the last three years. Parents putting up their results, now we didn't, we don't do a parent balloon every single time. So I have four data points here going back to 2010. Pretty consistent, second highest excellent rating over the 12 years. Two-thirds of parents rating the quality of education as excellent, 68%. 96% rating it favorably, only 4% only fair or poor. If we look at some specific perceptions, to keep this chart a little less busy, I only went back for the last five years. 2017, it's important to remember that that was going into a bond referendum. 2019 was going into an operating levy, 2022 is coming out of a pandemic. So on spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently, at 71%, the high over the five years. Now in 17 and 19, district finances are in a spotlight when you're going through a referendum or a levy, what have you. And so we expect those to be lower, the further away you get from the election, typically higher. Norm on this right now is 55%. So you're strong compared historically and to the comparatives over the last year on spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently. The trust to do what's best for the children has been all over the board over the last two years, based on the pandemic and decisions made and the happiness or dissatisfaction with those decisions. On the 79% right now is about nine points higher than the norm. Norm, there was a point early on in the pandemic where that was almost a 50-50 proposition across the state and across the metro on the trust issue, but very strong. Honest about spending, yeah, 7 out of 10 agree that you're honest with spending, up eight points. Norman, that's about 54%. The schools are a good value for the investment? Absolutely. It's never a big, a concern here going back to when I worked the first time in 1995. Nine out of 10 believe that this, that the schools provide a good value for the investment. Now, four questions that are not necessarily new to the district, but new, we put them back on because of the pandemic. These are some important issues that districts have had, had to gauge public opinion on. Has a district done a good job communicating? This obviously has been the lifeblood, especially with parents. And we're going to see that parents, when we get into communications, are extraordinarily satisfied. Overall, with the community as a whole, very strong, 85%, 10 points higher than the norm. Good job of involving the community. This was the norm before the pandemic. Three-quarters of folks saying, yeah, you're doing a good job of involving the community in decisions. The pandemic actually made the norm drop, because it's very difficult to involve the community when you're doing things virtually, nothing in person, you're social distancing. So the norm on that right now is about 66%. So you're about 11 points higher. So whatever's been done, whether you're doing in-person or the virtual or what have you, people do have a sense of involvement. Are they proud and would recommend the schools? Absolutely, almost nine out of 10. And the one question that's been really fascinating to watch is the state, it's just a simple statement. I am satisfied with the school district's decision-making. 66% agree with that statement, 19% disagree and 16% are unsure. Now, what we do is we follow up and ask, is there a specific issue you agree or disagree with the school district's decision-making on? What is that issue? So they can tell us anything. And we see here a pattern that we've seen across the metro and across the state. I'm pretty sure from all my experience in talking with superintendents and school boards, that you've heard from those that have been upset with any decision you've made surrounding the pandemic, okay? And asking this question, do they, if they agree with decisions you've made, 20% agree with the mask policy you put in place and 8% agree with COVID decisions. So 28% of folks upfront, in an open-ended question are saying, I agree with decisions you've made on COVID. What about on the disagreement side? 4% point to the mask policy and 2% point to COVID decisions. So it's a 28 to 6 in favor of the decisions you've made, instead of opposed to the decisions you've made. This has been very consistent. I mentioned the other night, I was at Eastern Carver when the fisticuff started last fall. And even at that meeting, on a question like this, it was three to one in favor of the decisions the board was making as opposed to, but the most vocal elements are the ones that are showing up. And so you're at a six to one ratio is a very strong endorsement of the decision-making the districts made. Job performance ratings. Uh, once again, um, this would have been, if we'd have surveyed, it's very strong now, not saying it'd be the same in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. There, there were some bumpy times for school boards and administrations. Um, and so right now, the school board, um, you're, you're at sixty-six to sixteen. This one, we always look at a ratio. Uh, so it's four to one. Norm right now is two to one. The height of the pandemic, fall of twenty twenty, it was actually a fifty-fifty split. You had half the people thrilled, half the people upset. Um, so we've gone back to a two to one, you're at four to one. The administration, sixty-three to ten, a six to one ratio. Norm on that is about two and a half to three to one, so it's double. The one thing I'll point out on both of those, though, is you do see higher levels of uncertainty. On the school board, it's at the high over the fi- five years of eighteen percent saying, I don't have enough information. And on the administration, twenty-seven percent. And so that goes back, these are the non-parents. And it, it's kind of warranted. I suggested at the end of twenty twenty, going to twenty twenty-one, a lot of districts need to do a reintroduction of who we are and what we're doing to non-parents and what we've accomplished over the course of the pandemic. It's probably a good idea to do that. Also with principals, uh, seventy-two to eight. The closer you get to the kids, there tends to be more adoration, uh, but still, one in five folks saying, I don't have enough information. Almost all non-parents. And the teachers rating eighty-two to seven. Um, the eighty-two percent's a little, uh, low. And what we found is it's really important to keep in mind the timeframe of this survey. The survey was in the field during the Minneapolis teacher's strike. And that has, that has left a bitter taste when you have a teacher's strike and you have union and you have what's perceived as adults, uh, in children's issues, um, especially non-parents get upset. Um, and so we've seen this drop across the metro and across the state. It's still eighty-two to seven, it's very strong. Where folks has gone, especially amongst non-parents, isn't to the uncertain category. Um, as far as parents, I thought I put up their, uh, the scores on all four areas over the last ten years. Uh, on the school board, uh, and administration, you can see, uh, it said seventy-two to thirteen. Uh, the shift is not, there's no statistically significant difference in the negative. There's a twelve-point uptick in the unsure. On the administration, no difference in the, uh, in the unfavorable, an eighteen-point increase in the unsure. Um, and so even with some parents and the specificity, I think it'd be great to do some, uh, more communications about, um, not necessarily that they're going to pay attention, but that reintroduction piece. Uh, principals, eighty-four to twelve, and teachers at ninety-four to six amongst parents only, uh, that sample itself. The overall assessment then of the value, so when folks think about the taxes they pay and the quality of education provided, um, this is where the rubber hits the road question, the, uh, percent is seventy-seven to twenty, uh, with four percent unsure. You, you're unique here. What you have is you have multiple factors here. So you have people assessing on costs and you have people ex, uh, looking at, um, achievement or the quality of education and balancing the two. So one little change in the perception one way will, will flip it. Um, so you're actually down on the overall by about ten points, but the excellent rating is up sixteen points. Um, and so what you have is kind of a softness on that good and only fair. And it goes back to especially those in that most serious issue question, uh, talking about getting back to normal and the achievement gap. Um, that's kind of going to be in play on how it comes out for folks as they think about that evaluation moving forward. On the adequately funded, uh, this, I guarantee you, uh, is not a straight line between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-two, just on all the data that we have, but you're back to exactly where you were. Is the district adequately funded? Forty-eight percent say yes, forty-three percent say no, and nine percent say unsure. Pretty much, this is, this was like the pie, the universal constant before the pandemic, with half the people think you are, half the people think you aren't, and ten percent have no idea. Um, and so this is unique, this is about twelve points lower. This has gone up, the norm is now sixty percent saying, yes, they're adequately funded, based on federal government, state funding, and all of those sorts of aspects. Let's move into the parents-only portion. How informed do parents feel about the progress of their child? Seventy-one percent indicate very satisfied, twenty-four percent somewhat satisfied, five percent not to or not at all satisfied. Now, on this one, the seventy-one percent very satisfied is the highest we have over the last five years. That, that is an enthusiastic rating, and these are your harshest critics. Um, I mean, especially when you're talking about parents wanting to be updated on the progress of their child at the time of the pandemic. So whatever has been done with the tools, I would just a little bit on the technology, um, this goes a long way um, in making people strongly satisfied, your key consumer strongly satisfied on the most critical piece when you go through on the updating of the progress of their child. What about, uh, are they satisfied with opportunities to participate in decisions? Um, in two thousand and sixteen, it was ninety-nine percent. This time, we're down to ninety-one percent. So this is statistically significant drop, but now you have in the ability to participate in decisions over the past two years during a pandemic. It's been a little difficult. You still have almost a majority of parents saying, yes, I am very satisfied with those opportunities. Ninety-one percent's about fifteen points higher than what we've seen over the course of the pandemic amongst parents. Just some general statements about the district, and they can tell us if they agree or disagree. Is the district welcoming, up seven points from twenty sixteen to ninety-seven percent? Does it provide a safe environment? Down, it's down eight points, it was a hundred percent, down to ninety-two percent. Clear expectations for student behavior, that is down thirteen points. We're going to see when we go to the next two. Do they agree that teachers show respect to students? Absolutely, unchanged, ninety-nine percent. However, do they believe students show respect to teachers? Uh, there's the hedge. Uh, so the relationship, that two-way street, it's a one-way concern with it's the students' behavior towards teachers and then that clear expectation for student behavior. So you do have this about twelve, thirteen-point, uh, change on, on parents. It's still eighty-seven and eighty-five percent, so it's still very strong. It's something to watch. One data point, a trend does not make. It's always, you need three data points, uh, but it is something to watch, especially is it something, um, this with student behavior, discipline, and safety, that all can come from outside in. What happens in another school district in the state or another school district across the country, people can internalize and think about what's happening here. So, I mean, it's something to assess, is it happening here, is it hap- bringing in from the outside? A few other statements, the, uh, the, um, buildings are in good repair and clean. Um, now, going back to two thousand, now, we have a big bond referendum between two thousand and sixteen and the twenty twenty-two. Um, so even when the district buildings were considered a little bit older, they still were considered good repair and clean. Are class sizes reasonable? Eighty-three percent this time. Do you provide modern facilities? You're up to ninety-eight percent with the bond referendum. Do they believe that the facilities will meet future needs? Eighty-six percent of parents agree with that, and ninety percent indicate that it offers flexible learning spaces. That key, we didn't obviously test that in twenty sixteen because nobody knew what it was in twenty sixteen. Uh, but in twenty twenty-two, I think flexible learning spaces has been, um, it's like due diligence, everybody knows what it is. Continuing with parents, going through the list, what's the key reason to send their child to the Mountview School District? We asked for the most important and second most important. What's the rate on the chart? The dark bronze bar is the highest impact, uh, indicator. Uh, and then with, combined with the second most, that gives you the impact of the, of the factor. So the number one factor is dedicated and talented teachers. Thirty-six percent point to it with one in five parents saying it's most important. Two other factors hit double digits, first-class education at affordable cost, at twelve percent, and the tradition of high academic achievement, and then nine percent indicating caring and supportive environment and safe and secure buildings. The typical, prototypical suburban response, uh, well, and actually, it's even, I'll say too, the convenient location. It's kind of like, because I have to go there, that's where the kids go. Uh, your folks actually are prioritizing, your parents are choosing five other factors at a higher rate than I just have to go there because of the location. Um, so it's teachers and it's the quality of education, it's the academics, it's the first-class education and the achievement happening in the building. And then with, combine that with that welcoming, compare, uh, caring, supportive, and safe environment for children. Amongst parents then, does the district do a good job of meeting the learning needs of all students? Most students, only some, or very few? Well, first off, a majority of parents said all students, very stringent standard, fifty-six percent, very strong. Uh, norm on this right now is forty-five percent, dropped down, uh, in early twenty twenty-one to forty percent. So that's been rebounding, uh, but that fifty-six percent is very strong. Following up with that forty-two percent that say most or only some, it's a rate in the upper left-hand corner. Is there a specific type of student whose learning needs are not being met? You can see it's a pretty typical theme that what folks have been saying now and you're hearing. It's the struggling student, the special education, the average student, the at-risk. So the concern is from average to below-average student is, is where that, the concern is on the achievement gap and what's happened over the course of the pandemic. Is there adequate support for student wellness? We, they were read, uh, a statement. Uh, the Mountview District provides a variety of supports for student wellness, including school-based mental health services in partnership with local mental health providers. Amongst parents, sixty percent indicate that you provide adequate support, eleven percent not adequate, and twenty-nine percent are unsure. This would be an opportunity for more information, not only to close that thirty percent of parents that are saying they're unsure, but to increase the intensity. Only eight percent feel strongly, only six percent say strongly yes, two percent strongly no, uh, strongly no. Um, so it is an opportunity for more communication with parents about these opportunities. I mean, this issue is very important, not only to parents but non-parents across the state, uh, coming out of the pandemic is trying to make students whole academically, but also socially, emotionally, and mentally. Also, Mountview's equity promise states programs and services will be in place at all schools to ensure that race, gender, class, and disability will not predict student success. Uh, do you think the district is achieving its equity promise? Sixty percent indicate yes, ten percent say no. Once again, though, twenty-nine percent of parents are unsure. Um, once again, this is an opportunity. It's almost a one-for-one of parents that are indicating if they have an opinion, if they're, or if they're unsure. I mean, and once again, you can see a soft agreement on this, only twelve percent feel strongly, yes, one percent feel strongly no. Um, so once again, on both of these, if they have an opinion, they feel like the district is offering adequate, uh, supports and achieving the equity. They just don't feel strongly, and there is a gap, a vacuum of information on those two items. So then finally, communication. Overall, how informed do folks feel about district decisions? The blue bar is the overall, fifty-nine percent of the community says they feel at least somewhat informed about district decisions. Nine percent very informed, however, forty-one percent feel not to or not at all. Um, this one, now, this is self-assessed, and you can tell that you have higher levels of uncertainty. So what people are saying is informed, that that might not necessarily, it might be the proverbial mile wide and an inch deep um, in the level of the information. Uh, but amongst parents, the key constituency that have had to be informed over the course of the pandemic, eighty percent feel somewhat informed, thirty percent feel very informed, only four percent not at all informed. Uh, so it's a very strong endorsement on communications. If we look earlier on, and then at parents specifically. The final two charts, how are folks getting their information? After the discussion, I thought I'd, I'd want to put this up just to show that it's very different um, between the overall and the parents. First, what leads, uh, amongst the overall, the district newsletter at twenty-five percent. Twenty-two percent of parents say it's the number-one source, but amongst parents, it's email. Forty-nine percent, it's set in stone now, the pandemic has made that, um, that is going to be their principal source of information. And this highlights also what I talked about Thursday night. As the local newspaper has diminished, you can see the power of the grapevine amongst non-parents. Nineteen percent in the overall sample are saying word-of-mouth, this small town, only one percent of parents. It's almost all over fifty-five-year-old, and it tends to be male, getting their information from the grapevine in the school district. And we've seen this as the local newspapers have dissipated. They haven't all of a sudden hopped online and signed up for e-newsletters or go to websites, they're getting it from another person. And then finally, how do folks want to get their information? If we look at the community as a whole, um, and look at print in the hand, thirty-eight percent want a mailed newsletter, eleven percent the local newspaper, so basically forty-nine percent, um, almost a majority saying, I want something in my hand. On the electronic side, sixteen percent email, thirteen percent website, seven percent Facebook, the e-newsletter, about forty percent in the electronic. However, amongst parents, it's all electronic is the prefer, is their preference. So the day hasn't come yet that the district can go all electronic, you have to provide both, you have to provide them strongly, and especially on the mailed side to fill in the gaps as local newspapers continue to dissipate across the, the metro and across the, across the country, quite frankly. So I think to sum it up, I keep it very simple. Whatever's happened over the last three years, and obviously, a lot has happened, a lot of decisions have been made, a lot of changes have been made with personnel, with curriculum, uh, just across the board with the pandemic. Whatever has happened and it taken place, folks are right back to feeling about the district enthusiastically. They were the way they were three years ago before the pandemic was even upon us in March of twenty twenty. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Leatherman? I know we have a chance to do a deep dive in work session and a lot of questions answered. Peter, you're, you're giving this, these presentations all across the metro. Your, you know, assessment, how should we feel about this? I feel pretty good about it.
I would feel very good about this, absolutely. E- e- especially to not have that, that downtick. I mean, whatever, it, it, it's not a straight line, but it, it is a line now between two points that is similar, and districts don't have that straight line. Districts have that, the, a regression, they have not rebounded. Where, where you are typical, and there's, there's an opportunity. I always, I always tell clients, nature abhors a vacuum. And so when you have uncertainty levels, unsure, uh, communication opportunities, you need to fill that in, especially with a grapevine that's growing. Um, a, a poisonous grapevine can switch things very quickly. Um, uh, you know, a very supportive grapevine, the same way. Um, so it is important to take those opportunities, but it, it is, it, it is really impressive to be able to have a flat majority saying that the quality of education here is excellent, uh, two years into the pandemic.
With the dissipation of local newspapers, um, are you seeing, um, there's all these chat groups and things out there? Is that where you're seeing the word-of-mouth growing? Do you see it there? Is it online or is it actual word-of-mouth?
It tends to be more word-of-mouth. I mean, you had, you could see on this one, Facebook comes up as, as an option, as saying, yeah, that's the most effective way. On this one, we had seven percent saying, you know, principal source of information, uh, so, uh, Facebook or social media. That's actually a high normally, because this is, what's your principal source of information? You might get two percent, especially now, because now there's not only a generational difference on social media, how you feel about it, there's a political difference. Um, and so, um, you see the uptick, you, so you see right with this chart right here, more non-parents are using social media or Facebook specifically. As my twenty-one-year-old tells me, parents have ruined Facebook, so, um, you don't, no, no kids go on Facebook anymore. So this is non-parents going on it. So it is, I, I tend to put Facebook and social media and word-of-mouth, that's twenty-six percent that are getting it in a, I don't know, informal gossip-style sort of, sort of thing. Uh, but that really is where folks have gone, um, as the local newspaper has disappeared.
Yeah. Well, and I think, um, the comment you had made too, that word-of-mouth, the demographic of that is a, an older male generally. So it's like, we gotta ensure, you know, when we think about all the different places we go to talk to folks and get feedback from our community, um, that might be an area we need to like, how do we access that? Is it the Lions Club? Is it, you know, what is that group where we can be a little more engaged and proactive in our communication?
Excellent, thank you for making time. Appreciate the long-time partnership, ninety-five, that's.
Ninety-five, yeah, we were doing Burt and Igrin, right?
Yeah. Taking it way back.
Way back, old school.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very, um, envious of your job, mostly because you always get to work with, uh, Bill Morris, who is just always brilliant. Bill Morris, who is just always brilliant.
He he was my mentor. He was my professor at Augsburg. So it goes back a long time. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Moving to side of five point two, updates. We'll turn it over to Mr. Demay for AMSD and legislator.
Oh, it's a little busy over in St. Paul. We had a nice meeting on Friday morning and we had two really great presentations, one on the teacher's pension and it was really great to hear that, you know, several years ago, there was, you know, some issues here and there, but it it is almost nearly fully funded by the state. It is on solid ground at the moment. And so what the state has told the teachers is what's going to happen. So it's really great to hear that it's really on solid ground, but you know, also interesting things where the investments of the pension board have been fantastic the last five years in growth. And if you look at, you know, the fiscal year will end at the end of June is that you're looking at a negative year for stock market growth and investment growth. So, you know, there are some challenges, but that was really great to see that the pension plans are very well-funded and going in the direction they absolutely should be. The state capital is interesting at the moment. They still have a six-point-five billion-dollar surplus to spend. We don't know if we're going to get there. Their tax bills are miles apart, which means their spending bills usually at the Capitol. The revenue bill, once it passes, it breaks the logjam. They aren't very close on those right now, but they have done a few things, there have been a few steps forward. As our technology folks mentioned, there is a student data privacy bill moving forward. It is a very good and a very well-intentioned bill to basically notify parents what digital tools are used to create student data, that type of thing, to notify parents, protect students from mining and people profiting off them, those types of things. But there are little nuances to the bill that I think we probably have fixed now. There was, if people opted out, they could totally opt out, which means we couldn't monitor for stolen equipment. We couldn't make sure we're obeying state and federal laws, that we couldn't use it for E-rate funding, so we couldn't get information online over subsidized lunches. And it also probably would have meant that people would have been, if they wanted to totally opt out, leave instructional use. So we've believe we fixed those and they're going to move on. There still is a big fight over the special end funding. I attended an event with AMSD at the Capitol on Monday and we went around to visit people in the House and the Senate to discuss the special cross-subsidy and how important that was. That remains, once again, miles apart between all the parties, but there seems to be at least some recognition and I think we've done a good job as school boards and parents and educators have done the same to let people know that the special added funding is very important and it is one of the top priorities there. And so that is my report.
Thanks, Jim. Move to nine sixteen, Sandra.
Yeah, a few things. One, I just had Sarah forward to each of you, you should have in your inbox, a draft of the equity policy that nine sixteen has put together. We'll have our first reading in June of that, but they did look at a lot of member districts, including ours, of our equity promise and policy and tried to use some of the best of of all of them. So please take a look at that. If you have any specific input, provide that back to me within the next couple of weeks so I can carry that forward to the June meeting. But specifically, you know, really looking at, you know, they got they're getting feedback from a lot of various stakeholders, including the importance of student feedback. So really getting student feedback on that equity equity policy as well. In the process of doing our first superintendent evaluation for the new superintendent, we'll be doing that evaluation for Superintendent Bo, kind of similar timeline that we have here with our own district. So I'll be in the process of doing two superintendent evaluations. The first reading of the fiscal year twenty-three budget was presented. And we ratified three contracts for the periods of July one, two thousand twenty-one through July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. So again, reminded how fortunate we are here in Moundsview District to get our contracts settled early. And we're really pressing for that to to be, you know, done in that way moving forward with nine sixteen. So that's that's the goal moving forward. So it's not a great position to be ratifying contracts when you're, you know, nearly a year into them, but three of those were were approved at the meeting. Tomorrow, there I've got a couple tours I'm going to be joining if anyone wants to go tomorrow. The the Wells North program, we're touring that at eight AM. And then the Cora Education Center, we're touring at ten-thirty AM. So both of those are programs that we have a fair number of Moundsview students at. So if anyone would like to join me, please let me know and I can get more information to you. Again, that's tomorrow morning. And then we have a board retreat, a school board retreat in September. So I think that's it for today.
Thank you.
Yes.
Move to side of six point one, school board member reports. Does anybody have anybody anything to share?
I'd like to give a brief report. Yolanda and I both serve on the district equity committee council and we had a really great meeting. And was that already almost two weeks ago? Time's flying. But we had one of our members of the district equity council works for the University of Minnesota Extension Services and was able to do a pilot with some of our students. So students from all of the secondary schools here in Moundsview were instructed on how to interview their peers and 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 really ask them about how the pandemic affected them. And those students then were given a tour of the University of Minnesota, were able to share their their findings and and really learn quite a bit. And a couple of those students presented to our team, which was really, really informative and really beneficial to us. And then we also got an update from Angie Peschel and Dr. Courtney Bell, who are working on, who have worked on over the last almost two years, the development of the African-American history course for our high schools. And I think everyone here might remember, but that was an initiative that initially was going to be a one semester course in the history or social studies department as an elective. And as the group of administrators and teachers went out and sought feedback from parents and students, they said, we really want it to be year-long and we really want it to be something that fulfills a general history or social studies requirement. And so this year launched the first year of it. There were three sections at Irondale and two at Moundsview, I believe, right, Angie? And next year, like seven sections at Irondale and?
Five at Irondale and four at.
Five and four. So really neat to see the students really enjoying that. And I know Yolanda has a student in that course and has really enjoyed it as well. So it was really, really, really fun for the the DEC to kind of hear about, just really hear and reflect on all the work that the members have been doing and how that's starting to impact our students. So there's a lot of work being done behind the scenes with with staff training, with policies, with, you know, all of the different subcommittees that we're working on, but it was really fun to hear. Anything to add?
You did such a great job. I would just say again, it's growing because of the interest, because of all of the really positive word of mouth. The students are talking to others about it. They're extremely positive. I can tell you, again, my daughter, it's the one class, I know, for those of you with high school students, you'll probably relate to this, but it's a little difficult to get them to talk about what's going on at school sometimes, but this class is the exception. I mean, she comes home, she's like super excited to tell me what they're learning. And so I think that just speaks to what I've heard from some of the other students, that, you know, they feel heard, they feel seen, they feel acknowledged for, you know, the diversity that they bring to the district and, you know, being able to have a class like that where you can learn history through a different lens has been really, really positive experience for a lot of the students. And not just, again, my African-American student, but, you know, Caucasian students and students of all races and ethnicity. So I can't say enough positive things about the work that's been done. I mean, there was a lot of work that went into creating that class and a lot of thought because there's just so much to cover. But, you know, I want to thank, you know, all those involved because it has really made a difference for those students and for the families. So and I agree, the students that spoke, I mean, that's why, one of the questions I had actually asked, you know, our researcher, you know, if we're doing student surveys, right? Because I I don't know that we have as much information about how the pandemic has impacted students from the students, right? I mean, we have, obviously, we're all having conversations with students, we're in and out of different schools, but it was really interesting to hear their perspective when they interviewed and did these peer interviews. And I think there's going to be a lot of really good learnings that come from that and just different ways that we can potentially respond in the in the future. So I'm excited. I think we're going to meet with the students that spoke to us to just gain some more insights. We set up a follow-up meeting because it was really, really, like I said, some really impactful insights that we can all learn from and hopefully we'd like to get them in front of the rest of the board so that you guys can hear from them as well. So it was great. It was great to have representation from both Moundsview High School and Irondale as well.
Thank you. Any other reports?
Well, I was fortunate enough to attend the district art fair over at Irondale and it was just wonderful to see all the talented students and their works. It was just really great and it just reminded me how important that we take time to invest in the arts and the humanities. All the district art teachers were there and as a group, they were just absolutely wonderful. They're very proud of their students, they love what they do. It was just great. I also managed to catch a little Irondale lacrosse, very impressive lacrosse club there and great, nice weather. Got out to see Moundsview tennis today and got over the Iron Valentine Hills PTA and they did a lot of neat stuff for Teacher Appreciation Week. And as I said, and as everybody has mentioned, and as the survey showed, the community, the district, we all value our teachers quite a bit and they are the they're the linchpin to everything. And so thank, thank you to them.
Thanks, Jim.
I will say my social media was filled with people posting about the art, you know, the art exhibit. And so it was really fun because I unfortunately couldn't make it because I had a scheduling conflict. So it was just, like I said, it was nice to see that and it was also flooded with a lot of teacher recognition. So I think that's just a testament to how much the community as a whole appreciates the teachers. It's great to see.
I was also going to comment about the Irondale lacrosse, the boys' lacrosse, lacrosse program is doing, having a really great season and I got to go to that game last week, although my son being the goalie for the Moundsview team, it wasn't so great for him. But the Irondale lacrosse program is, I think they're ranked eighth in the state. I don't know if they're holding that, but pretty impressive. And then I just wanted to comment on, I know, last Saturday was Irondale's prom, this Saturday is Moundsview's prom. Time where I always, you know, hearken back to our former chair, John Tinula, and the importance of, you know, like just safety and people, everyone stay safe and make good And then I think by the, when we come back here, we will have had have gone through graduation.
Commencement or two.
Have had commencements at our high schools. So I am very much looking forward to that.
And you won't be a puddle at all.
I'm going to hold strong.
You have all the way till the W's to cry. I need D's. It's really hard to hold it together.
Well, I'll tell you after serving on this school board for, this is my eleventh year, it's always that, you know, I think we all share this, that it's the best part about being on the school board is, is, you know, handing out those diplomas at the end of the year. And this will be for me, I get to do it to my oldest. So I'm really excited about that and looking forward to that. And I'm not going to cry.
We'll send Chris with the clinic. Is there anything else to come for the board? We are adjourned.
Thank you.